We did send a picture of that, too.
Yep.
It's probably this right here.
The driveway is 28 by 50.
The driveway is 28 by 50.
At this point, I think their application meets all of the requirements for issuing the conditional use permit. My suggestion for the board, if you choose to grant it, and you do still have to have a public hearing on the conditional use permit, would be that they receive all necessary Before the accessory dwelling is occupied.
Before the construction begins.
The septic plan on having that on file, is it realistic to expect that prior to building? I'm trying to think of the amount of time.
Before it's occupied, that's the reason you need the septic before it's occupied. So that you would grant it with the condition that they receive all necessary building permits.
No more questions? Do I have a motion?
I will move to take your suggestion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're voting member, you can, or nay.
I can abstain, right?
You shouldn't.
Well, we can.
Well, you can, but you should vote one way or the other.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you taking minutes?
I'm going to...
He has some notes, and I'm doing some notes, too.
I will make a motion to grant the conditional use permit.
You need to have a public hearing.
This is the public hearing.
No, but you need to open it up for public comments.
Oh, yes, yes.
I did.
No.
You didn't?
No, you didn't.
I thought I did when I asked them to come up.
No, they're the applicants, but if anybody in the public has...
Excuse me. Okay, I'm opening up the conditional use permit, public hearing. Are there any abutters to this project that would like to say anything? Okay. All right, moving forward. Sorry.
Okay, I will make a motion to grant a conditional use permit for the accessory apartment with the conditions of getting all necessary building permits, having a septic plan on file with the state for replacement, and that all fees be paid.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, you're approved. Your next step is to go to the building department and get whatever necessary permits you need for building and accessory things like plumbing and electric and whatever.
There is one question that I had, I don't know if... this is where I ask it. Everything, the electric, plumbing, septic, has to come off the house, and it also says heat. The garage in the house has a concrete pad between it, which is like a four-season room, basically, so we'd have to run everything outside underground. And I've talked to a few plumbers, and they said you'd lose so much efficiency in the heat running it underground like that if we could put a separate boiler or furnace in there. We're gonna... the heating's in AC, we're gonna do like the split units that actually have heat.
Like these?
Yes.
Yeah.
So they have heat also, so just in case it can't keep up, would want something else. I didn't know if this is where I asked that or not.
I don't think it's... no, I think it's in the building department.
Okay.
We discussed that with them.
Well, I didn't know, so...
But doing something like mini splits in a second part of a home would be consistent with a single-family dwelling having a secondary heating system.
Right.
Right.
So that should be...
Yeah, it's something to touch base with the building inspector for.
Okay.
And we will make sure that he knows that you've been approved. If you're... are you planning on going Thursday night?
For...
To get whatever permits are required?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we will... I will make sure that he knows that you have been approved for this apartment, and then he will let you know what you need to do, what permits you need to get from there.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Good. All right. Closing this public hearing. Thank you. Okay.
I have notes for Gail.
Yeah, yeah, you do some, and I'll do some, and maybe she can make some sense. Okay.
Now you're gonna do your motion to approve?
We did it already.
We couldn't vote to approve it until after a public hearing is done.
We did.
You did vote to approve it with conditions.
Yeah.
We did.
At least that's what my notes say.
Right.
Yes, we did.
We did. Second item on the agenda, I'm going to open up the public hearing for two-lot subdivision plan for Robert Lang, Two New Boston Road, map 10, block 1, lot 13.
Is this a good location, the board?
Okay, you will need to speak in the podium, at the... in the microphone at the podium, please, and please identify yourself.
Okay, my name's Dan Nally, and I work for Dennis Quintel, who's on vacation. I'm here to answer any questions the board might have with the proposal that we have in front of the board. We're here tonight seeking approval for a proposed two-lot subdivision, which I'm sure the board is familiar with. Status at this point is that we've received state subdivision approval. We have, I believe, met all of the regulations required except for the placement of monumentation. So our intention would be tonight to get a conditional approval pending the placement of monumentation, certificate of monumentation, and production of final milar. And I'm prepared to answer any questions you might have, technical or otherwise, about the plan itself.
Okay. Do any of the board members have any questions on this?
The plan shows several structures within the setback. Are those structures gonna stay there?
The middle structure's already been moved, the left structure is movable, and the right structure, as far as I know, is not necessarily movable.
It's not.
But it's more than 10 feet from the property line, so it's an accessory structure.
Is that the one that says existing shop?
Yes.
Okay. And what... these other two small buildings, one is gone and one is going to be gone?
The middle one is gone, and the left one is movable. It's mobile. And we wanted to show the placement of it at the time it took the field measurements. Those certainly are movable, and shouldn't present a problem as far as setback.
So you said there's like 10 feet between that existing shop and what the new property line is doing?
That's correct. 10 plus.
That's allowed under your accessory apart... accessory structures.
And that's not... I mean, I can certainly put a mention of the property line and the final milar.
Now, is the existing well being abandoned?
The existing well has... would be not abandoned, but the state, in order to apply for state subdivision approval, we needed to provide them with a well release form, the state.
Okay.
So that there wouldn't be any issues for guide to septic. And the other... and I should point out that we are showing a proposed well location in the event that, you know, contamination, wherever, is issue. We do show a proposed well location, such that we can... I've already explained on the law. So rather than providing a well use for the existing well, we think it'd probably be a lot more acceptable for a proposed well location, should there be any kind of contamination or any problems with that existing well.
But existing one goes over the property line?
Excuse me?
Yeah.
The existing well would go into the other property line?
Yep.
Because it's existing, it's allowed to remain. It is actually better than state to have... for new wells, they have to be entirely with on its own property, which is why the proposed lot, or the new lot, its well is entirely on the property.
Another thing that I don't know, I mean, when you look at the proximity of wetlands, too, by the time you come 75 feet off the wetlands for septic purposes, you can't place a septic system within that well radius because of the extra 25 feet you're gonna gain. I mean, the setback that's shown there is actually a building setback. That would carry out another 25 feet. So this part of that well radius is pretty much rooted from the doggy thing, so there wouldn't be any chance a septic system would be placed within that well radius.
Okay.
And the state actually made us fill out a well release form, which is a state requirement, and I believe it's a town requirement.
Excuse me, what's the distance between the two driveway entrances?
I would say we've got at least 50 feet between the two center lines based on scale of the plan. And both. And the proposed driveway that we're showing does not run through with a building setback as we're showing. There is a possibility to cross through wetlands on the property or provide a driveway that would go up the side of the property, but that would be within the building setback. So if any prospective home buyer were going to go that route, they'd need to get a license inshore. But there is a possibility to put a driveway right through the middle of the wall. You'd just have to go through a state wetland across.
So they haven't got a driveway permit yet?
State driveway permit?
Town.
Or is...
Yep.
No, I don't believe there's been...
No, because it's not actually a lot yet.
Yeah.
Because we don't really sold, you don't know where the actual location is.
Well, because I'm driven by, and that's actually the driveway now. I mean, that stone wall is not there, they've taken that stone wall out. So I was wondering if it could go there, or if it, you know...
I think it's...
Who said where it could go?
It's the road agent.
The road agent.
Yeah.
Because there's a big tree right there.
Right, the road agent would decide.
Make them take it out.
Right, so even though they cut it in already?
Well, that's a proposed. It doesn't necessarily mean...
They're just showing that there is a location where a driveway could go.
Right.
It would like, wherever possible, that lodge trees be retained.
It's a big lodge tree.
It is a big tree.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else on the board have any questions?
I think the application is complete enough for you to take jurisdiction.
Well, we're in the public hearing, so a butter.
Yes. Okay, do we have an...
You should take jurisdiction before you open it up.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess I'll make a motion to take jurisdiction.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Okay. Do we have any abutters that would like to say anything? You'd have to come up and identify yourself, please, sir, and speak in the microphone.
Good evening, I'm Jim Siskowski, 84 North Main Street, right on the corner of New Boston Road and 108, director butter. And right off the bat, I'm against all of it, because I've been there maybe a year shy or 30 years, and put in 10 years of planning, saving, and research, you know, to build my house. So I've got like a 40-year investment in my place, and I take exception to having my privacy and, you know, peace and quiet taken away from me, and, you know, for free and then for someone to profit by it.
Okay, so noted, thank you.
Did you say your house is within 200 feet of that property line?
What's that?
Does your house within 200 feet of the property line?
Whose property line?
Well, the one, your property line.
It's a butt's.
Well, where's your house placement, though?
He's in the back, that log cabin.
Doesn't he have to show 200 feet if there's a structure within 200 feet?
Yes, but it's also quite... the houses are set fairly far back on that corner.
So that's why I'm asking if his house is 200 feet from, like, where it is over here?
But his lot is here.
Oh, it's not a budding...
But he still is...
No, his lot, yes, he's right...
His butt, a butt.
He's next to it, on Main Street.
His house isn't necessarily within 200 feet of the...
That's why I was asking, is it 200 feet from this lot?
Is his property at the bottom of that?
Yes, it's right here.
Okay.
Well, this is here, this is the line is here, right? So this is that question.
I believe he has Callahan's old house.
I'm into Callahan's.
Okay, this is his.
So what was that?
I mean, your house is within 200 feet from the property line, that's my question.
From the property line mine and...
Now it's his yard.
Good question. I'll have to get the tape measure out. It's on a plan somewhere, because it was all submitted to the state and to the town years ago, like 30 years ago.
I don't believe it is based on my view of aerial photos. So I can't give you a definite yes or no.
Okay. All right.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it?
Thank you very much.
Do you have a question?
I was just trying to understand. Compared, so the new lot that's being created is on the other side of the lot from you, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll be able to see it. In other words, houses going around my house that, had I known that was gonna happen 30 years, well, 30 years ago, you know? I'm getting kinda old to start over again.
Okay, well, people do have a right to split their piece of property up if they meet the conditions in the regulations, and so that's what's happening here, and he's within his right to do that, should he show that everything is according to the ordinances. So, sorry you feel that way, but...
I have to speak my piece.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do you have any other abutters that would like to... need to say anything?
I'm Tom Cluier, 8 New Boston Road, and I just got a couple issues. I have no problems for the subdivision, but strange things have happened during the whole thing, and I've tried to contact Bob, nothing's happened. One of them is, we all know the bond was taken care of. In the meantime, that there do not cross line, Bob drives his tractor over that and parks it 10 feet from my lot line, where the earth was moved around last year. I brought it up to the town, to the state, and they said there's nothing they can do, can't make a dig the whole yard. I have pictures here, there's actually got no trespassing sign, there's a camera facing right at my yard. I've tried to look at all the laws, one of the camera laws, if it's definitely at your property, it is a violation, so...
Okay, that... if you have something that's a violation, I believe that needs to go...
Sorry.
If you have something that's a viol... if you believe that something's a violation, I believe that needs to go to code enforcement.
I just have to... I was told to express my feelings here, because I...
Right, and you have a right to do that.
And one of the things is, I'll just pass these to you people. The tractor crossed the line, it wasn't... During that process, he took down trees, moved the stone wall to make a new entrance. Mike told him to cease and desist, don't touch a thing. In the meantime, he moves out, he moves the tractor, he takes all the trees from that lot and puts them right where that spot was. To me, it's a suspicion that something's there. That's a complete suspicion, everybody knows that, but I just have to say that. It's kind of a nuisance to me. It's a glare to my property, it's 10 feet from my property. You people have things saying you shouldn't be a nuisance, shouldn't be a glare to the neighbors, and all these things I just bring up, and nobody seems to have any concern. And like I say, I have no issues if he wants to make that thing, but it says right here, camera that points solely to your property is an invasion of privacy. I brought that up to the town, nobody seemed to worry about it. The camera's now gone, the driveway's almost in, he's actually moved stuff where he wasn't supposed to, but it's just, what happens, I just don't want your town to get in trouble when something happens later on. When the new guy is trying to sell it, new guy buys it, I don't know what'll happen then. The trees have been cut, the stone walls moved, it's just everything. I had a suspicion the bond was buried, nobody believed me. I got a suspicion, why would he cross those lines and park the tractor there? Unslightliness, I'm ending up with that stuff. I have no trespassing signs pointing my thing, which that's fine, but they're supposed to be signed, they're not. And all that, I just had to give him my... I was very friendly with Bob, but it seems I'm the villain here.
If you have... it seems like some of your concerns are, if you think that they are violations of the town codes, you need to go to the code enforcement officer and issue a complaint. A few of the things that you've brought up, I think are actually more civil matters, and I would suggest you speak to an attorney.
Right.
But what the planning board is dealing with here tonight is a subdivision of the property, so there's, as far as no trespassing signs or things that may or may not be on his property, they have very little that they can say or do about that. So it's not that they're not hearing you, it's just that they have very limited jurisdiction over this.
And I understand all that, but in your town ordinance, it says you don't be a nuisance, don't make your neighbor's yard look bad, your abutters think. It's just, he puts all them trees, stumps and logs, right 10 feet from my yard, they're in the picture of the lot line.
Nobody... he happens to still be on his property.
This is the only opportunity, it says right here, no glare, no unsightliness, no other nuisances. That's in your town laws.
But he is still on his property, he's not on your property, correct?
It's on his property, but it says here, the abutter should not be putting up with nuisance and unsightliness, that's in your thing, so...
Again, that would be something through code enforcement.
Definitely.
Like I say, 100%, if he wants, I'm fine with that. As long as you people, okay, with the driveway already being almost started, that's up to you, I can't...
All we're actually dealing with is whether or not to permit the lot to be divided into two lots. Now, the... if you believe that somebody is creating a nuisance next door to yourself...
Right, right.
Well, no, you know, you go to the building department and speak to code enforcement.
Well, your subdivision laws say no nuisance, no glare, so that's to your neighbors, so I'm just... that's the only thing. So I just had to let it be known that...
Tom, it'll be consistent.
Something strange has happened, and I've talked to every official in the town, and they have it on record, the state, so I just...
Okay.
Tom, the road agent's gonna make it...
I'm sorry.
The road agent's gonna make the difference about where the driveway's gonna go. He's gonna have to get a driveway permit, and Mike's gonna have to approve it.
Yeah.
So if he's put it where Mike don't want it...
I only ask to let him know. I don't like, like I said, I follow the law. Invading the privacy of the campus, all stuff like that, if it doesn't go away.
Thank you, sir.
I'm in that, 100%. The new neighbors here.
Okay, thank you. Jen, did you have anything else?
I only have a few comments that the state subdivision approval, while they have a note on the application that it's pending, if, since you've received it, the note needs to be noted on the plan. That's my only suggested condition beyond standard conditions.
The state subdivision number needs to go on there?
Yep. It meets all of the state plan regulations with the exception of monumentation. I'm sorry, subdivision regulations, and that can be a condition of approval.
Just a general question, I'm sorry. Is there a problem with removing a stone wall for the permit?
No. On scenic roads, if they're on town property, they can't be removed.
Right.
However, New Boston Road is not a scenic road.
Okay, thank you.
So...
But when... but Jim, when Sergeant Woods was done, they went in, they were in the woods, and they opened up certain sections, and they had to get approval to remove them stone walls.
Not for...
That's my recognition.
Not for doing driveway access.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they were doing roads.
Yeah, if they're putting in a road and what have you, yeah, however...
Well, I just wanted to bring that out.
Along scenic roads, where you quite often have stone walls all the way along the road, you can't just arbitrarily go out and remove the entire length in front of your house. Quite often, they sit on top of what is now town property.
Yeah.
There's one going on, on my route to the shop, that I noticed that they went through and they've pulled all the rocks back, they've cleaned out all the brush, and I'm hoping that they're gonna restock the wall. Otherwise, that'll be an interesting fight.
Mine was another general question. Yes. Because I noticed that this is two, and the next one, Mr. Cluier, is eight. So would that... who would decide, like, if this house becomes four or six?
The assessor, actually.
The assessor, so he'd have to know the number before he puts it on the plan? Like, they'd have to do that first?
They don't have to have the final address for an approval like this?
But the assessor could... you could visit with the assessor down there, she's in on Wednesdays, and...
You can have that as a condition in your lot.
Get a number assigned to that piece of property.
Right, because then at least we know what number it is now.
Right, it's up to them. It's up to the assessing department to decide what address that's going to be.
Can we put that as a condition? She said we could.
Oh, that's... I just wrote it down.
Oh, thank you.
they're gonna have to do a new plan to contain the note regarding the state...
State subdivision number?
Subdivision permit, it'd be... we would behoove them to visit with the assessor.
Get the physical address number first, before you do the new plan, yeah.
Sure.
Can they check that 200 feet and see if we had Jim's houses on that side?
I believe that it would be on here if it's within 200 feet.
It would have to be on here.
Yes, it would have been on here if it was within 200 feet.
I'm unclear about what you're... why you're concerned.
You have to show structures within 200 feet of the property boundaries.
Of a subdivision.
On a subdivision plan.
Existing. What's there already?
It's 200 feet on that side. If it would make you... you could have a condition that if any structure is within 200 feet of the property boundaries, it be shown on the milar.
Well, I thought that was in our subdivision rules, that's why I'm asking.
It is, if you would like that as a verification.
Well, yeah.
I don't believe any structures do, though.
Well, yeah, just to verify. Waiting for you to write.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve the subdivision with the following conditions, that monumentation be completed, that the applicant meet with the assessor to assign street numbers, and that any structure within 200 feet of the boundaries must be shown on the plan. And that a note be added to the plan listing the state subdivision permit number.
Did we also want a measurement from this existing shop to the property line included?
Yeah.
Right, and then they should take out that one if it's not there anymore. Right, so they're gonna update the plan anyway, take that out.
Right, right, so put a--
Okay, and distance from the one that is marked existing shop?
Right.
And I guess the shed one?
And remove the ones that aren't there anymore, okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Barbie, did have somebody that had a question.
Sir, you're gonna have to come back up to the podium, sorry.
Just a question on the outbuildings. How many outbuildings are over there supposedly?
There's a couple of small sheds, some sheds, over on the other side of the property, from where you are. I'm sorry?
And how many is that?
There is one existing larger building, one of the buildings that's shown on the plan is gone, and the other one is going to be moved.
So there's three?
Three small, yes. One is gone, so there's only two, actually. Yes, the one is going to be moved, but it's not gone, right?
Right, it's actually a movable shed from the, we have the applicant here. I'm guessing that that shed that you say is movable is on wheels? That's usually what movable means.
Okay, yeah, you'll need to go, you'll need to go up there and to answer that question, please. If you would.
No, it's standing on four by fours, off the ground. It's not on a foundation.
Okay.
The only one that's on a foundation is the one I was permitted for, which is the shop slash trophy room.
Right.
Which is on concrete. The other one's completely movable.
Okay, it's movable, but you're not planning on moving it?
Unless we're told, we have to. The 10-foot is off the back of them, we did meet that qualification.
Can you tell me what the size of that shed is? Approximately?
Eight by 16, 20, right in that ballpark.
Maybe he could add it to the plan.
Excuse me?
Maybe he could add it to the plan along with everything else.
I mean, he's allowed to have accessory structures that close to the plan.
If it's 120--
Have to be so far away from that.
But if it's 120 square feet, it can be five feet from the property line.
Right. However--
It's over that.
If it's eight by 20--
Well, he said it's 16 by eight.
Eight by 16 is, what, 48, 88, 126?
128.
It's over.
Right.
It's over.
So that's over.
So it's a little over, so it's supposed to be 25 feet from the property line.
Yep, our variance.
You can request that he move the shed into the structural, out of the structural setback.
The, how far does the existing shop need to be from the property line?
25 feet.
As an accessory structure, 10.
Correct, as long as it--
As an accessory structure, 10.
As long as it's not over 120 square feet.
That existing shop, just from the drawing, looks like it's a lot bigger than that.
Right.
The existing shop is bigger than that.
Right.
Right.
So you couldn't make the new lot line that close, because you have to be--
You have to get variance.
That was a permanent structure.
Right, when your lot line was over to the other side, but now you're moving the lot line to, close to the shed, which the new lot line would have to be 25 feet away from that shed, because it's already there. You can't make a, something non-conforming. It'd have to be made conforming.
Okay.
So, because 120 feet, square foot, 120 square foot can be five feet from the property line. Anything over that's supposed to be 25 feet from the property line.
Right, and at the moment, this appears to be a pro--
I'm sorry?
Even that was permitted.
Well, when you first put this in, you didn't have a property, you didn't have a property line going down the middle of the lot. So there was plenty of room between your building and the edge of your property. And now that you're proposing a new line, it's 10 feet where it really should be 25.
Excuse me, I think you're talking about two--
No, no, not--
Okay.
That's what, that's all you have to say, I think you're talking about two different buildings.
Right now, we're talking about the one that says existing shop.
Correct, that's the one that we're talking about, exactly, yes.
Right, okay. So you said that's about, the gentleman said it's about 10 feet from the property line?
Yes.
Okay. When you put that shop in, it was in the middle of your piece of property practically.
Correct, yes.
And you had a long space between.
Yes.
So now it's, whether it's an existing building or not, there's still supposed to be 25 feet between the property line and this building, as per the ordinance.
Right.
Because you couldn't make it non-conforming with the new line.
We're not allowed to accept non-conforming--
Right.
To zoning. That--
So that is not a movable structure?
Right, however--
They're saying the lot line is movable.
Has to move.
Right.
Yeah, so it, either you move the structure or move the lot line.
Right, because we cannot--
Propose lot line.
Approve a plan that does not conform to zoning.
I would add that if you're making us choose between moving the structure and the lot line, if you try and make the lot line fit 25 feet to that structure, you're never gonna meet the lot width.
That's my next question.
Well, then you can't do it.
So--
The idea would be, you could either be looking at the zoning issue, which you'd have to demonstrate a hardship, I'm not sure you can demonstrate a hardship here, or we can move the building. If that's the case, I mean, those are the two options. Because I don't believe you would be able to move that lot line to--
Because you have to have that lot width there, okay?
Right. And you're gonna cramp the lot from having any possible access to non-letting lands.
Okay.
But that's why we're here, to see if you can or cannot do this, right? So if what he wants to do isn't doable, then maybe he can't do it. Or he has to go get a waiver.
You could say he needs to get a, you could have a condition be that he goes and gets a variance to allow for the existing shop to be within the structural setback.
Yep.
Right.
We're checking measurements here.
Well, I mean, we can't just guess.
You can move the shop.
No, that's what, I didn't bring a scale, so.
Yeah.
It looks like it closes maybe 12 feet of the lot line, the existing shop.
At the nearest corner, I'm--
At the narrowest.
It's not, it's not a full 20, 20 feet even.
No, it's not.
How wide is the lot at that narrow?
Well, I used to have a scale, but I don't have one.
I don't know why they don't show the distances.
Could be done by straightening this line, keeping, because this is the width that they have to maintain. Bringing this down this way, and this over this way.
It says on the front, I think the-- 75 feet.
It looks like it could be doable.
Ms. Chairman?
The front has to be 100.
Maybe the board should request a new plan showing the distance from their buildings to the lot line, so we got an exact--
Right, well, he said approximately what it is, but Mr. Doggett has a suggestion that they may be able to slightly move that angle right there to still have the right width, but get the 25 feet.
It's gonna cause increased monumentation.
So the board, just in general, should not be--
Bringing this down straight so it's a 100-foot width.
Dictating their plan, you could do a, if you wanna see, you could do a condition--
That would give you your 25-foot--
That either the existing shop receive a variance to be allowed in the setbacks, or that they receive a variance to amend the lot line. So they would get the variance from the width, minimum requirement, lot, minimum requirements, to allow the actual lot line to bring the existing shop--
Or they choose to eliminate the shop.
They could choose one or the other.
Or they could, they could get a variance for the shop, get a variance for the width, or get rid of the shop.
Yeah.
Three options.
Yeah, I mean, that can be your condition, you just need to phrase it as such.
Any of those would satisfy the--
Your concerns.
Change the lot line is the cheapest.
You've already accepted jurisdiction of it. You do have complete information to make a decision. It's just what decision are you going to make?
Okay.
You should bring Jim back.
Yeah.
Jim?
Jim?
What you doing over there?
Hey, Jim?
Okay.
Jim?
I'm gonna meet you here, Jim.
Jim?
We are wanting to hear what you have to say, yeah.
Would you like me to read--
Well, I figured I'd discuss it with the applicant before I suddenly threw it out.
We're here for open discussion.
Can I suggest my suggestion? You could have a condition, if you wanted to, be that the applicant can either seek a variance to move, seek a variance to allow the existing shop to be within the setback. They could seek a variance to allow for a reduced lot width, or move the existing shop so that it is in, it is in compliance with the setback. So it's got one of three options. And given that the, honestly, the reduced lot width by just enough to allow that existing shop isn't a dramatic change to the plan, or getting a variance to allow the existing shop within the structural setback, not a dramatic change to the plan either way. Let them determine which is more feasible. I can't tell them what variance they would be more likely to get, that's up to the zoning board.
Well, one of the difficulties would be, where it's a new subdivision. Would it be even feasible to argue hardship? Because they have to meet all the criteria for the variance with the ZBA.
I think that's something that they would need to consider, which variance they would--
Yeah, I just, I'm not certain that they have, because technically, if you don't do the subdivision, that building is not an issue, therefore--
I hear what you're saying, I think that's something for them to decide. And if they don't feel that they meet hardship, then they can move the shop.
And then the--
Or you can request that they come back with a different plan, and then you continue it to the next meeting.
Yeah, showing us the distances.
I mean, the distances are shown because they've provided a scale.
Yeah, and we can, you're clearly eyeballing it, it's not within, it's within 25 feet. It's, I'm not sure exactly what the distance is, but it's too close.
They've indicated the 25-foot structural setback.
Yeah, here's the 25-foot right here.
The dotted line is.
I thought that, no, that, that's right, that is the 25-foot.
The dotted line that goes through where the existing shop is, yeah, that's the 25-foot.
It's this line.
Can I just ask a question?
You can.
Direct to the building.
Can you, are you Mrs. Line?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, could you identify yourself?
I'm Sharon Stanley.
Okay, thank you.
Interested party. So I have a question as to that shop that you're concerned about. That got a permit years ago to build it. So if it got a permit years ago, wouldn't it, I thought you said, Bob, that we talked about that, that that, that you were told, you were told something. What were you told? That it could, it would still be approved because you did get a permit and you went the right way through all of that?
At the time he got it, he probably, you got all of the correct, if you got the building permit, you got the correct permits, because it wasn't a non-conforming structure at the time. Creating this new lot line would cause it to become a non-conforming structure. That's what they're not allowing.
So you can move it, move the structure and then--
You can, you can, you can move it or re-- You could move it or remove it, whatever.
Remove it.
I said you could move it or remove it, whichever, you know, and then if it's not there, then it's not an issue anymore.
It doesn't become an issue until you put a lot line beside it.
Right, because when you put it in, like I said, your lot was this wide. Now you wanna do a lot line, and that makes it an issue.
Because I'm really very concerned with these people here that, you know, Bob, excuse me, I'll bring that up here. You know, Bob has a lot of class and has sat here and not said one word about a few of these people here and what he has gone through with these people. Now, I, my concern is, and maybe I shouldn't tell you, but I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you. If you wanted to go for a variance, you know that we'll be right here with the people that have issues and their personal issues, and they're going to, there's gonna be another argument. We'll sit here and we'll be in the same position. And it's, and it's not fair. At least, I don't think it's fair, obviously, because I'm here and I want this to pass. But, you know, it's, I don't know, I just had to say it.
Well, like I said, until you decided to put this new lot line here, that building wasn't an issue. And now it's within, and like Mr. Doggett said, we are not allowed to approve anything that would make that in non-conformance with the ordinances.
The other variance they could seek is to allow a structure that's bigger than 120 square feet within the setback, have it be based on size and not setback. Because right now, it's limited to 120 square feet, they could ask to allow something larger. That's a, that's a different variance request that could also be made.
Okay, and that would be something that you would have to take up with the zoning board, then, to ask? Because we don't do variances. Mr. Cludier, did you want to say something?
I was saying I shouldn't do things in town. When she stands up there and say, "You people," to me, I'm sorry, but this is not the place. I didn't bury the barn, I didn't go through all this, just let's not bring that into it. When she starts insinuating, "You people," she's talking to me and Tom, the only guy that saw this happen. You know what?
Hi, I just got a couple of questions. Who owns the property right now as it sits?
This piece of property here?
Yes.
Mr. Ling?
Owns all of it, and that's that. I met this gentleman recently cutting my branches on my property, on my side of the boundary, and he says he owns it. He's buying it. And he's been living there how long? A while. Okay.
Is there something wrong with that?
Well, we're not here for that, we're not here for that discussion.
You know, go and find someone chopping down my branches, I don't go over to your place and do it.
That's a matter outside of the jurisdiction of this court.
Sir? Excuse me, let's not have this argument here, because that really doesn't have anything to do with this lot line adjustment, sorry.
I really think we should continue until they find out what kind of a variance they want. We see the problem, I think they've gotta come back with what they've--
With the answer.
They wanna provide.
Yeah.
And once they, once they come back with a solution to the issue--
Yep.
Then we could vote to approve a--
You make that motion, I'll second it.
Okay, motion to, well, with the, with the--
It would be a motion to continue.
A motion to continue?
No.
No.
No, once you accept jurisdiction.
Actually, because we're--
You're within your 65 days.
Right.
But this is gonna take longer than that, for them to get their variance.
No, you would not hold up an approval or deny, based on the need for a variance, but if you would like them to explore options of, maybe they don't require a variance, maybe they are gonna choose to move the shed. I realize that might not be feasible, but let them see what they can do to bring it, so they either need a variance or they don't. And you could approve it--
At least for that, for now.
And they may variance is granted.
I'm just running options here. If they reduce the size of the structure so it's such that it is underneath the threshold that you're speaking of, would that be acceptable?
Yep, if it's less than 100. Yeah.
We want the plan to conform to the zoning ordinance. Or to have variances. So however you choose to do that.
Yes.
However you, however you choose to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, that's up to you.
One option would be only have one accessory structure that is a max of 120 square feet in that general location.
Right, because if it was 120 square feet, it could be up to five feet from the property line, this existing shop building.
There's a motion to continue, to...
When will you be ready to, will you be ready in two weeks with an option of how you're going to solve it, or should we continue it for two meetings away?
No.
Okay.
I would say put it on the next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
If they choose, if they are not able to be there, they can let us know. We can just continue it for another two meetings.
October 10th.
Thank you. That was my next question.
Right. That way, they have the options.
That's fine.
Okay, so we've, Mr. Hamel, motion to continue this to October 10th. Mr. Seconded, do I have?
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay, so that's unanimous.
Keep your paperwork.
Okay.
Keep the paperwork.
So we're continued until October 10th, when you will come back and tell us what kind of solution or how we're going to go forward from there.
Do you have a solution to all work out by that time? Is that something the board can vote on at that point?
Yes. No, they could, we could vote on it then at that time if they have...
If you, Dennis have any questions, or Mr. Lang, please feel free to contact me. I know Dennis has my information.
Right.
But if they need a variance, they have to go to the ZBA, right?
Yes, if you need a variance, you'll need to go to the zoning board for that.
And I'll remind you, if you do come up with a solution, try to have it here by the Thursday prior to the next meeting because we don't take hand and across the table from anybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Barbara, just out of curiosity, if he comes back with a plan showing that the structure is only 120 feet, right? On paper, but it isn't really done yet, right? Can we hold up the subdivision until that building is done, instead of turning around?
Yes.
Okay, so I thought.
It would be a condition of approval.
That someone would need to go down there and make sure that it's now 120 square feet.
Right, we would, before we grant this. Because other than that...
Either the building department or code enforcement.
Right.
Yeah, but we don't want to put the ball on our part. We want to put the ball on their part.
Right.
Make them do it, and then we approve it.
There are ways toward the condition and making sure that there is confirmation that it has been accomplished before you sign Miler and have it approved.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yes.
Are we ready? Yes, no?
I did not.
Okay.
Nope. Okay. Okay, all right. Everybody ready?
Can we move the side conference out of the room?
Did we ask you to carry out your conversation outside? We're just continuing the meeting. No, that's okay. You're welcome to stay.
Thank you. Okay. All right, all right. Next item on the agenda, open up the public hearing for the amended site plan for Coleman-McDonough. 27-2 Puzzle Lane map, 14 block 1, lot 27-2. And I believe it's Mr. Frankowicz that's going to speak.
Yes.
Hi.
Scott Frankowicz from Brown Engineering and Surveying, here representing Coleman-McDonough on lot 27-2 on Puzzle Lane for an amended site plan. The original site plan was approved back January 19th, 2006, prepared by Civil Construction Management. What I'll do is I'll go through the similarities of this plan and then the modifications that we made to reduce the impact for the site. Similarities are the buildings are the same. They're 100 by 80, two buildings, 8,000 square feet. Same location, same access location off of Puzzle Lane. The parking in front of building one is the same. It's 18 spaces. On the site plan, I was approved in '07. This connection, for some reason, was eliminated. But if you go back to the approval of 27-1, Phase 1 and Phase 2, it both says that will be connected, and it's on the recorded plans at the Registry of Deeds. Moving down the plan, the parking between building one and building two roughly stayed the same. We reduced them. There was an overage of parking, for some reason. They did 20 extra parking spaces. We eliminated that to eliminate the impact to the overall site. Drainage system is essentially the same. It's two swales going down either side. We did add one for bay on this side. The original design has swale and a for bay and a pond. Now we have swales on both sides, for bays on both sides, and then a wet pond in the middle. The for bays are used for pre-treatment, and the wet pond is used for treatment. Septic system in the same location, which is adjacent to building two. It's in the process of being reviewed. I submitted it to subsurface. They had three questions and one comment on the plan. Those have been revised and being delivered to Bob LeRone Thursday. It's for 24 people, the same as before, I believe. I'm not sure what his number was. 24 people because we're proposing one well instead of two wells, like was proposed on the first site plan, which limits the number of people, 24 people within both buildings. It goes over 24 people, he will have, obviously, upgrade the septic and add another well. But right now, it's proposed, and he has to stay under 24 people. Dump truck location is the same, which is about in the middle of the two buildings, in the middle of the parking lot. Lighting stayed exactly the same on the exterior of the building. And landscaping stayed roughly the same. It was a little bit of overkill they had on the original plan, so we reduced it a little bit, but it's essentially the same. And access to the buildings have stayed the same as approved, which is overhead doors on the backside of this building with some front entry doors up here, overhead doors on this side of this building, and front entry doors up front where the parking is. So the modifications we made to the original plan, one was an email, I believe, came out from the circuit rider to look at the wetlands again. So Tom Sokolowski from TES Environmental Consultants went out on September 9th, flagged the new, flagged the wetlands as he found them. We went out on Monday, the 11th, and located them, put those on the plan. I do have plans that show the new wetland, but I don't want to submit them until, if we have more comments, or if you want me to submit them, I can submit them. We, one of the major reductions from the original plan was down here, he had, well, back up a little bit. The original plan impacted the 50-foot wetland buffer for about 31,000 square feet, which was done on all the other plans within the park, was impacted the buffer with grading. We've reduced it down to two small areas of buffer impact, which we can't eliminate to get around this building. There's a little impact to the buffer here, and a little buffer here, and I'll speak to that in a little bit. So we eliminated, there was 28 spaces down adjacent to building two. Now there's only 11 along this gravel area. This area, light brown, is a gravel area. And like I just said, we reduced the wetland buffer impact from, I have 28,275, which was originally approved in '07, to now about 1,900 square feet. Which overall, this reduces, the original impact was 120,000 square feet. This impact is down under 100,000 square feet. It's at 95,000, which doesn't require an AOT permit. A couple of other things within the parking lot, we eliminated. There were some islands kind of awkwardly put in the middle of the parking lot, which anybody who lives in New England knows are really a pain in the winter for plowing and maintaining the parking lot. So we eliminated those. We did leave them as painted islands, but eliminated the obstruction for plowing in the winter. And the last thing I have on here for modifications was this. Connection to 27-1. It was on the plan for Phase 1, approved 7/1907 by Woodland Design Group, recorded at the Registry of Deeds under D34859. And then again, shown on the Phase 2 plan, done by Civil Construction Management for 27-1, recorded at the Registry of Deeds as D365458. Today, we've been to the zoning board a few weeks ago. We received two equitable waivers for the structures to the property line. Because, as you know, originally, when this site was approved, it was a 30-foot setback. That's what this site was designed at, and now it's a 50-foot setback. The zoning board approved two equitable waivers for those structures to be closer than 50 feet, but they're like 31 feet. I've got the ZBA plans below. Still outstanding are the two wetland buffer impacts, which I said is coming around here, and that's really to get the drainage down and around it to the detention pond. And there's really no way to stop that impact as minor as we could get it. And the impact, like I said, is 1,900 square feet. To orient everybody kind of where this site is within the park and to the other zones around us, because there was discussion about being 200 feet from residential. The closest residential, this sign-in line is where the zones change. This up here is residential. This supports light industrial, commercial. So the closest point is right here from the site to the residential lot, that's 230 feet. So there's nothing, none of the work that's be done on this lot would be within 200 feet of a residential.
I can't see that far.
Scott is correct that they are not, they are not required to meet a 200-foot setback because of being next to residential zones. I think I had mistyped that or misquoted that in one of my previous letters, so. It is a 50-foot setback currently. They've received the equitable waiver for 31 or 32 feet.
Yep. I believe, like I said, we got comments back last Friday from DES on the sub-surface design. Couple of comments asking about AOT because, and I got another email today from Gloria Andrews, and I responded to that email, telling her why we didn't submit an AOT and why we don't have to for this site. First, typically, we submit an AOT after the first planning board. After the planning board gets a chance to look at it and make any changes. Because if you don't, the alteration of terrain is an expensive permit, plus it's a lengthy permit. So we don't like to submit something that has to be revised and resubmitted. But we don't need it on this, so I responded to that email, and of record, I sent it to the town. I sent it back to Jen and answered that question that we don't need it for the site because we are under 100,000 square feet. And I think that's it for me.
Just because the AOT permit, just so the board doesn't... The reason I even contacted DES to find out if an AOT permit had been applied for or a renewal because the, on the original site plan, theirs had long expired. The original disturbed area for this with the original application was the 124,000 square foot of disturbance. AOT is triggered by 100,000 square feet of disturbance. To me, the plans are, while they are slightly different, we're not to the threshold of being 25,000 square foot difference. So I wanted to verify and just ask the question of AOT. If they're under 100,000 square feet of disturbance, Scott's correct, they do not need an alteration of terrain permit. If they are, then they do require one. So DES has seen the submittal. That's in their purview. If they determine that it is needed, then that would, any conditional approval would be they receive all necessary permits. There was a little bit of a discrepancy in your drainage calculations with some of the numbers. At least, I think Mike Fignelli also commented on it, so that was one of the reasons for the question.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything from anybody reviews.
Mikes were sent out two weeks ago. I have not provided you written comments, but I can forward that to you if you haven't received it.
And like I said, just to talk to the impact, we did reduce the wetland buffer impact by almost 30,000 square feet. So there's your, almost just that, and then we reduce some parking and stuff.
So you're not disturbing any wetlands? You're just disturbing a wetlands buffer?
Correct, and that, the original plan was the same. There was no wetland impact. It was a wetland buffer impact. But back then, you didn't, the board was looking at the buffer differently and not requiring a variance or anything to disturb that buffer. Now the board has decided that that buffer is a variance impact.
The reason is for the structure within the buffer setback. That's the main distinction.
Anything that requires a building permit. It doesn't have to be a structure, as in thinking of a structure, grading, anything within that buffer on any property.
Correct.
The way we're interpreting it.
Anything man-made, always how I look at it.
Yes, Jen?
I have a couple of considerations for the board. One of the requirements of a site plan application is to provide an existing conditions plan. The one that was provided shows a lot that has no development on it whatsoever. Before you accept jurisdiction, I think a very baseline determination that you should make is whether you are willing to accept an existing conditions plan on a site that you know currently has structures on it. Because what they submitted shows no structures. It shows a undeveloped lot, and that is not the case at this site.
Yeah, and that wasn't the case the day they submitted it.
Correct.
So if they showed us, if they bring in a plan and show them the structures that are there, they're going to have to show all permits, approvals, right? Inspection approvals?
Not necessarily. Existing conditions are what is there. permitted, not permitted. It's just what's there.
Yeah, but if you build, if you build something there, why not finish the whole thing? And then you don't need no permits.
I'm just saying that if someone came in with an existing conditions plan and it showed someone in a setback, or showed someone an encroachment for some reason, that's showing existing conditions. It doesn't mean that was permitted.
Yeah.
That's not a requirement for existing.
Right, it's two different things.
The plan that we just had has a shed, that they showed us the shed that we're telling them to take off the next copy of the plan because the shed existed when he drew it. They've since removed the shed. But it was in existence when they created the plan. This existing conditions page does not show what exists.
But it had no permit.
Yeah, but permits are issue right now. It's just existing conditions on the plan.
It's page three.
Right.
The conditions that you're showing on page three, when did that exist?
To the best of my knowledge, at least a year ago.
I couldn't give you a, I know it was probably this early this summer, it was like that.
So I just, that is a decision that I think you need to make before we move on to a large degree. My other major comment was just the degree, or how long ago the wetlands had been surveyed. It seems that you had them surveyed, and I'd want to, ultimately, want to see a stamped copy of that.
Of course.
But if that's been already done, then that, my concern there is. And that the existing condition plan reflects any changes that have occurred.
What's that? I'm sorry.
And that the existing con- And that the existing conditions show any changes that may have occurred.
Right, because this existing conditions, it says as of 3/31/2015, so I would think existing conditions should be what it looks like today.
Yes.
So, we don't want to know what it looked like in 2015, we want to know what it looks like now, and what's there now.
It's on your stamp, just below the signature block, where your stamp is, that's just what the date is on it.
So, these pages that, like, page, it says four of 10, it says, has a date of 3/31/15, so you haven't changed anything on that page from the original, is that how I can follow this along?
No, you look at, that date is incorrect, you look at the date down at the title block in the bottom right-hand corner, 8/17/17, is the day we submitted them to the town.
And that would be the update, what this would look like at that date?
That is an existing conditions plan of, when there was no structures on there, that's typically how you show an existing conditions plan. Yeah, there might have been disturbance, I don't, I'm not sure what the exact disturbance was on that date that we submitted it, but that is the existing conditions prior to any disturbance.
Okay, but that means that this is incorrect when you date the page, that is not the existing conditions on 8/17/17.
That is the existing conditions of the site before any disturbance. That doesn't necessarily say that it was on that date.
That's an interesting take on dating a document. I'm sorry, but you put a date on a document that says existing conditions plan, that had better have been the condition, the existing condition, the day of the date.
That's not necessary, I mean, you would have an existing conditions plan that could have been done a few months prior to an application being submitted, but that's why I want you, as a board, to decide what are you accepting as an existing conditions? Is it what it was, you know, a reasonable time before the submittal date? If it was two months ago, then there were foundations. If it was six months ago, there probably weren't foundations. So that's why I want you to decide what existing conditions you are willing to accept, because that has impact on the rest of the application.
I think we need to know what's there now.
Do you want to know what was there as a?
We also have to know what it was like before it was disturbed, because...
My main concern is the wetlands, quite frankly.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, you sort of need to know what it was before it was disturbed, and you may very well want to know what it is today, and then what they plan to do, I mean, we may need an extra sheet in there of one of, like, that exists here, which was before any disturbance was made.
My main concern is really the wetlands, and if they've had them redelineated, or someone's certifying that what they have is correct, then that means that any wetland buffer impacts, we know what the impacts are to the wetlands. We know what area is being impacted, and what maybe isn't wet now, or is wet. That's my main concern.
Which has been done, just not submitted, like I said, by Tom, Hillstampton and Sinai, the plans were...
I guess, my concern about the wetlands is, again, not having been out there, and not knowing what's there. It's sort of like, has anything been upset at that point? So we want to, that's why I'm interested in what it originally was in addition to what it is today. I would like to see both of those pictures.
You must want a site status plan as of today's dates, or, you know, slightly previous date?
Actually, what we basically need to do is pick a date, this appears to be prior to anything being done to it.
This appears to be prior, at least in less spring, or any grading being done.
And choose a date, and say, August 1st, September 1st, July 1st, we want a snapshot of what...
I wouldn't go, that would be very hard to produce, if not impossible. If you want a as of, you know, as of today, more or less, what are the conditions?
Okay.
I mean, to go back two months on a, what is an active worksite?
Yeah, with something that they would know, because the work has not been continuous on the property, whether or not they have the ability to go back to a certain date.
Well, if we're asking for existing conditions, doesn't that actually say, we want to know what it is right now?
As of this date, you should say the date. I mean, usually you would accept a little bit of leeway, but there wouldn't have been work, there wouldn't have been work done on the site, is the caveat to that.
Yeah.
Because that's the thing, when I look at this plan, I think it's, like, this says proposed building, so to me, not a stick of work's been done.
More than a stick of work has been done.
Right, but, so, so it's not proposed if they already started something, so...
It's proposed to be approved.
Right. Well, the board gets to decide, do you want to request a, that page three show existing conditions as of today?
I want two page threes. I want the one we have, with some idea of, you pick what this represents.
Yeah.
Give me a time, whatever that is, and then another page three, or whatever, that shows, that shows existing conditions, a week, one way or the other.
Does that make sense?
Haven't been asked that before, but we can do that.
How feasible is it to get something in close proximity to today's date? Because my guess is there was probably work done in the past week on this site, or something got moved around in the past week.
Yeah, I mean, I...
I'm not confirming, but I just, that would be my guess.
It'll be within the next week, we'll be able to get a snapshot of what's on there. Within the week of this date, if you said that, this date.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
And we would like to see a date on here, maybe it can say existing conditions plan as of, and put the date.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a whole separate sheet, call it 3A or something, that...
Right, so basically, put some kind of a date on this page three, and then a new sheet that has a very more recent date.
Right. I have what might be a stupid question, but, do we have an application that goes with this plan, like, is this, oh, yeah, so I don't have it right, well, right. Because that's what I'm wondering, like, what is it they're asking for?
I reminded people at the last meeting to bring everything back.
Okay, so I have to look at this, all right, because that's what I'm like, what is the application saying? Okay, I got it, thank you, I'm all set.
And just to confirm, you have submitted a variance request with the ZBA's concern. Has the equitable waiver been withdrawn?
That was approved at the last meeting.
I'm sorry, the equitable waiver for the wetlands.
Well, it's not, the equitable waiver was for the buildings.
Yeah, I do, but originally...
Wetlands is a variance.
Okay, because there were two equitable waivers originally applied for.
Originally, actually, everything got submitted in both, and then the zoning board.
But they approved one and continued the other, correct?
Correct, they approved the two equitable waivers for the structures to the sideline setback.
Correct, right.
And then they wanted a variance application for the two small areas of wetland buffer impact. Not, they had been submitted as an equitable waiver, but they didn't, the board didn't feel that that's what was appropriate for that.
And you're supposed to go before them on October 16th?
Yeah, October 16th.
So they went before for two different waivers, they got the first one, the second one, they have to go back on October 16th?
Right.
If and when we get to that point, you, any conditional approval would be on that they receive that variance, or else this site can't be designed, or can't be allowed as it's been designed.
You have some other comments on the plan to put before the board. If you go to the site plan on...
Tell me the page.
Four.
Yeah, I'm guessing it's four.
Four is your main overall site plan?
Oh, sheet four, yes.
Sheet four, okay, sheet four.
And if you compare that to sheet six, which is the landscape, one of the problems that we have with gravel parking areas, is they have a tendency to grow on their own, especially if they are near loading bays. What happens is that one row of parking, especially where this is fairly flat, becomes two rows of parking off of the gravel, and things get stored off of the gravel, and there, those are things that...
If that's a concern, you could require rows, boulders, or something like that.
There are evergreens proposed for there, I'm suggesting that that be either guardrails or something much more permanent, because, as you can see, there are what appears to be compact growth shrubs there, which I suspect won't survive the first plowing.
Well, but there's a pond right there.
It's a detention pond.
The pond, so how can they park on that?
I'm not so much worried about parking, but going beyond...
Okay, well, you know, one of the things that's not on this plan, which we ask a lot of times, is to show where they are going to put the snow, so that it doesn't go down in here, not know what plan that needs to go on to.
That was one of my questions about this site, is where does the snow go?
Right, because it can't go down into, like, this pond.
You've got this whole side here, that snow can be stored along this side here, there'll be some trees, but snow can be stored there, so...
But the delineation of that location is what...
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, because we've asked for that on other plans.
Especially with the parking on the other side, you don't want them pushing all that snow into the wetland pot, so they're going to drive around and dump the snow on the other side.
And that's part of your site plan regulations, is showing where the...
Where the snow storage is.
Right. Yeah, you don't want them pushing it into that wet, I mean, not into the sediment pond, right, retaining ponds.
We're going to wait for the wetlands, and where are the snow stored?
It needs to be delineated on the...
Which sheet?
It should be on the overall site plan.
On the overall site plan?
That would be a typical location.
Do we have anything about, like, bays? He said there's going to be bays on this left side of the building, and there's a 45-foot, there's a 45-foot turn, so is that enough to turn and back in the big trucks?
What page are you on?
I'm on page four.
You're on page four.
You said on the left side of that bottom building, that there was going to be loading docks?
There's overhead doors, like, on all the other buildings out there.
So like loading docks, right, so...
Not, there's loading docks, and that's something that...
Trucks can go in and load and unload.
It's flat.
Right, but it's large enough so that a vehicle can come down and turn into a door.
Right.
25 feet, which was on the original site, and then it's only 36.
Right, but those are going to be parking spaces, so you don't want the trucks running into your parking spaces, so...
That's why I worried that you have the detention pond, or retention pond, is right beside that, it's not shown here, but if all you have is some little shrubs, people pull in, first, the shrubs go the first time it gets plowed, because they plow everything right into that basin, and there's nothing to stop, you know, a vehicle from getting a little bit too close.
Can we require a guardrail?
I was just going to say, we could request a guardrail there.
That's why I drew the guardrail in there.
A lot of times, we'll propose big boulders, three, four-foot boulders, instead of guardrails, those aren't moving with plows, those are going to stop plows. Guardrails can get damaged by plows, it's just as easy as a shrub.
As long as they are close enough together so that vehicles and what have you cannot get between them, and snow is not plowed on top of them.
Why is the parking gravel rather than on top?
What we try to do is try to mimic the approval that was done in '05 or '06 as closely as possible, and they had a large gravel area there, so we left, reduced it, but we left a portion of this gravel, and it helps out with, you get a better permeation rate with gravel than you do with pavement.
Right.
So it's reduced.
That is going to be a very steep slope there. And I've been on all of these pages and find no snow storage area.
Right, like I said, that was something I need to add to the plans, but there's obviously plenty of areas to show that, and, let's see where they proposed it, as we'll propose the same locations.
Just go back to our existing conditions, when they filled out their application, it's dated August 7th. On the second page, it says, are any structures currently on the property, and it does say, yes, foundations.
Yes, and they were at that time.
As of that date, that's correct.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody's trying to deny the fact that there are buildings on, or foundations on that lot.
Because I haven't been out there, and they even said there was something there.
Ms. Frankowitz, if I could also suggest, on the north side of Building 2, there's a small three-car parking lot, there should be some boulders there also. That's more to prevent people from possibly driving, trying to drive around the building.
Don't worry, quite well, I don't know.
We know there have been problems with that in the past, at other sites in town.
Do they automatically put, like, fencing around the dumpster, or do we have to put that on there?
Screening around dumpsters is required.
Automatically done, or whatever.
No.
No, you have to ask them to do it?
It's proposed on this plan, there's a...
Does it say on the, I don't see it on the plan.
On the detail sheets, there's a detail showing that.
Yeah.
The dumpster screening.
I see the dumpster, yeah.
Scott, am I correct, you have not seen Mike's note, Mike's comments letter?
What's that?
You have not seen Mike Fignelli's?
I haven't seen anything other than an email that you had sent out about getting the wetlands re-done.
Would the board like, so he, I have a copy of it, I don't know why you don't have a copy, but it's dated September 9th. Would the board like me to go through kind of the comments we haven't already touched on, and certainly, we can make sure you get a copy of the letter, but...
Right there.
It's dated September 9th. His first comment is about the fact that it's an ongoing construction site, the second comment is regarding when the wetlands were flagged back in 2002, but it sounds like they've already had them re-flagged, and they're getting them stamped. Some of the wetlands have been disturbed by ongoing construction, disturbed wetlands must be restored, and the restoration work approved by a certified wetland scientist and DES if required by the town. Comment four, the proposed grading contours does not reflect the four-foot shoulder area shown in the parking lot and driveway sections, grading must be revised, which may increase disturbance area. Number five, a detail was included in the plan set that depicted a stone edge along the edge of pavement, but there appears to be no indication on the plan where this will be used, please clarify. The slope per ADA regulations for parking seems to be in excess, so revisions are required. Bitumis burb detail set, but there appears to be no indication of the plans where this will be used, please clarify. The northern edge of the driveway appears to have gutter forms by grading that will allow storm water to flow along the edge of pavement, causing erosion, revisions are required, size and type of planting is not indicated. Number 10, drainage report indicates both 150 square foot and under 100 square foot disturbance areas, please indicate the actual disturbance areas that's related to the alteration of terrain permit. Free and post watershed maps on drainage analysis need review, test pit information needs to be provided. No evidence was presented to verify that the wet pond will remain wet, please provide information to support the design. Information regarding an outlet on the proposed pond with the emergency spillway, that gets into some... into some technical detail. Flow between the four bays and main basin must flow at a three-to-one slope. Additional swale detail is needed. More detail on the roof drainage collection. All slopes inside basins must be no deeper than a three-to-one slope. Pond detail indicates two-to-one. Stone aprons require end pipes. Drainage calculations must be stamped by a professional engineer. Some of these are details of which you... Almost any site plan application has stuff like this. But there are enough things that need clarification or need to be submitted that tonight, in addition to the existing conditions update, I do not think you guys should accept jurisdiction. You can still discuss details if you would like, certainly, but that would be my suggestion for this evening. And to also give Scott a chance to respond to that letter, which he apparently did not Some of that could probably get taken care of fairly quickly. I mean, test pit data should be able to be put on a site plan pretty quickly. Just as an example.
I agree with Jen. I think there's enough that needs to be, still need to, still needs to be done on the plans to preclude us accepting jurisdiction.
I mean, if there are other major pieces of information you feel that you need, I think it would be to the applicant's benefit to hear about that right now. My concerns are the two major...
I think we kind of went over everything that we wanted included.
I brought up the one concern I had while looking at it, was keeping vehicles out of the retention pond.
Right. And he's going to identify the snow storage.
Right, and...
Right. And then address those items from the town engineer.
And the only two comments from you, Jen, were the ones that you mentioned, we won't see a letter from you, or...
I will give you a more formal letter. Those are my two big concerns, of which I figured would probably change, and I didn't want to honestly take up more time and costs for the applicant. You guys are already dealing with a lot, so, rather than writing a big, long letter.
So we have a recommendation from the RPC planner to not take jurisdiction at this time, but to continue this?
I'll move to continue public hearing to October 10th.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
What's the date?
October 10th.
October 10th, yeah.
If you can't have stuff, submit a continuance request.
Right, you just let Gail know if you're not ready by then, and then we'll just continue to the next meeting after that.
It's a Thursday prior that you want everything ended.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Save your paperwork.
Yep, save your paperwork.
So October 5th, right? October 5th would be the...
We'll have a new plan, but hang on to it.
A few new pages, most of it may be the same.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of approval of the minutes of September 12th.
What's wrong, Roger?
Couple of things.
You can use, look up.
Okay.
First of all, it says that the meeting was called to order at 7:06, and then Doggett made a motion at 6:30 to go into...
Yes, it is, it is.
6:06.
No, it was 6:36 or something.
No, that's right, because we had our non-public meeting at 6:30 before the meeting actually started.
Well, the meeting started, and then we stopped and started...
We didn't start the meeting here, and we went directly back there before we ever opened up this meeting.
Then it should be written differently.
Yeah, okay. Who seconded my motion?
I did.
And the other item is on both going in and coming out of non-public. The votes of Estabrook and Holland were not recorded on the minutes.
Where are you looking?
She didn't say your eye.
I didn't vote.
It said it was unanimous, but it has eyes for everybody else, but Holland and Estabrook didn't have an eye.
Are you talking about for the first one up here, to go into?
Going into, Ann Walthall coming out.
Oh, it said she...
I say Holland and Estabrook, right there.
Yay, yay.
Oh, because it doesn't say "I."
Yes.
That's my fault. I did that.
I could have said "nay," you know?
But it said unanimous, so...
But you didn't say "nay." Okay, we will correct that.
Those are my only comments.
Okay.
I don't know if that didn't happen down here.
Yes, right, the cut and paste job.
Do we have a second for the minutes as amended?
Yeah, it's already, I've got it.
Who was the second?
Charlie.
Charlie? Okay. All those in favor for the amended minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Okay. I have a NEPR manifest here for noticing, butter noticing, and newspaper noticing, and a total amount of 194.05. NEPR.
Move to both.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sandra, are you...
Aye.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I have an operating budget manifest for RPC dues and the telephone bill, and the total amount of $4,960.92.
Move to both.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What was the number again? 4,000?
$4,960.92.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm just curious, what's the split on that, between the telephone bill and the...
Oh, the RPC dues is $4,901, and the telephone bill is $59.92.
Okay.
Checks in the mail.
Or bargain, $59.
Yeah.
Okay. This is KB Partners. Okay, this is... This is for early and sons from the Department of Motor Vehicles to be used as an auto inspection station. And where is the address? Six Puzzle Lane. We already approved this person, now he's just, he's applying to be an auto dealer now. We approved him, so this is from the state, and so I guess I need the board's okay to...
Move to authorize the chair to sign the auto inspection permit for the state.
We approved, we...
Repair?
No, this is, I believe that this is the gentleman that we approved, or him to sell two cars at a time or something?
But now he wants to do inspections, is that different?
I don't know, he ends up with like 14 parking spaces.
Oh, okay, this is the other person. This is guy around the corner, yeah.
He was applying for his inspection station at the time that he applied here.
Right.
So this is just the formality, because we already did approve it.
Yeah, the state sent it down and says that, yes, he already has been blessed by us.
Second.
He meets our conditions.
Okay, I have... All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm in abstain.
I abstain.
Oh, you're in a butter? Okay.
I'm in the same business.
Okay, thank you. I will sign this before I go. Oh, this is just alteration of terrain permit for the new fire station.
Oh, yes, they...
So it's just sort of a, for our information.
Notification.
To put in our fire department, in the fire file. Emailed. Oh, this is just something that was mailed to you from the town attorney, and it's just an example, I believe, of some other town that...
A decision that came down in Danville.
From another, from another town.
Right, that has to do with the historic district, and we don't have one.
I'm not really sure why we got...
Really what it has to do with what is a timely appeal to the zoning board.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's how I read it.
I have, I just, I glanced through it today.
The crux of the case is what constitutes a timely appeal.
Okay, all right.
Not touching that one tonight.
No, that's not, that's not. And this other thing, which is an example of, from the town of Stratum.
I like the way this looks.
But why do we need this? We already send all of our agendas and our minutes to all the other departments, and nobody ever answers.
I think this formalizes it. It provides a paper record of it.
But nobody's going to send this back, they never do. I mean, if the board wants us to start using a form like this, we can convert it for us, for our use, but if...
What is this for?
Just for like master plan.
This was on the suggestion of the assessing department, and this is what they do and use in Stratum.
Yeah.
But what do they use?
They use it to make sure that everybody got the information. But we know by lack of participation here, and hardly anybody except for maybe the Conservation Commission, answers, you know, looks at anything and gives us any kind of answer to say they have any input. Nobody even says anything for the most part.
So we've gotten input from the fire chief before and the road agent on, you know, that thing.
On occasion, right, but for the most part, you know, so I mean, it's like, if...
Most of these, the assessing department, yes, building department, yes, Heritage Commission, we don't have...
Oh, no, no, and Public Works we don't have.
Public Works we don't have.
Town Clerk doesn't...
Recreation, Town Clerk.
And Town Clerk doesn't need it, right. I mean, we can fix this for how our needs...
What I would use this is as a checklist, so that, and I think it behooves us to sort of go back to the point of, when we get a set of plans, we're, go back to requiring the number of plans that are required in our regulations, and actually take one, hand it to the assessor, okay, please sign next to your department here and check it.
That you got it.
Exactly. So that we don't have, because we have had instances in the past where things have gone up afterwards, and either the building department, or I know I, as a selectman, have heard from certain departments in town about, why was that allowed to happen? Well, you had the plans, did you voice your concerns to the planning board?
Right, see, that's what I'm saying, nobody seems to answer, so, okay.
Once we do, once we have a record saying that, yes, I, the fire chief...
Like physically handed it to you.
Have a copy of that.
Now that's putting more pressure on us. We get to make sure the applicant sends the ten things. We have to deliver the 10 things. She has to fill that out. We have to spend more paper doing that.
No, quite honestly, the applicant supplies us with the plan, and we put one in their mailbox.
Well, if you put it in the mailbox, that's fine, but if you have to go babysit them and say, hey, did you sign this? You know?
So one suggestion that may, that works in other towns, it may not work in Newton. Every town's unique. Requiring electronic submissions of all applications, you generally already get them, especially of, you know, site plans and subdivisions. Require that. Gail could then distribute it to us.
She can scan it, and then she can email it to people. Anything that's on a piece of paper, she can scan it.
I just, I'm meaning some like the bigger plans, too. Getting those as, say, fire chief, police department, road agent, you are all being emailed these plans. Comments are due on this date. So you have a record that they have been sent the plan, without necessarily a lot of time or effort on Gail's part. If they have comments, they know when they need to get, come back and reply with dates.
However, this sheet with some modifications, Gail could then go, okay, the assessing department checked, they got their plans?
Right.
No comments.
Well, so in other words, we could use it as an internal check sheet.
Right.
Okay.
Right, that's what I'm thinking of, something that we can use, so that nobody can come in and say, well, why didn't you tell us?
Yeah, the fire chief has comments about something.
According to this sheet, you see your copy.
Right.
Yeah, but you're less likely to get comments when you bury people in paper, or emails. It becomes, oh, that's another one from them, delete.
Now you got Gail tracking everything.
Well, but you know what? And then that's on them if they choose not to pay attention to it.
Yeah, I mean, you send the email out on the first of the month, say you have until the 15th, or, you know, whatever timeframe works, to review these plans.
Press your comments.
And then maybe on every 10th plan, the fire chief, and I'm not trying to put him in a, you know, says, I don't think my equipment can turn down this driveway, or whatever it is. And it's just that quick of a comment, it goes on your version of this form, so when you're handed this, you know, well, nobody had any comments, all right? One person had one comment.
Right, okay. You know, on that note, have we given this to the fire department to look at, to see if they have any issues with it?
It should go to the fire department, it should go to the police department.
Yeah, I don't know if we've given...
It should go to the road agent.
I don't know if we've...
In looking at it, I suspect the fire equipment's probably okay, but it's certainly something you want to confirm with the fire chief.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think...
Some of the other buildings, he has wanted to be able to get to the other side of the building, and here this would be difficult.
These are smaller buildings, most ladder trucks probably can reach them.
However, with the previous personnel in town, there was a discussion, and we, in the 11th hour, had to look at a certain developer and say, oh, there needs to be a fire lane around the back of your building. I mean, we were almost ready to accept the plans, and the fire chief brought, you know, gee, guess what? According to this sheet, you've had those plans for three and a half months, you walk in at the 11th hour and say, oh, I need a 40-foot-wide gravel path that goes completely around the back.
Right. All right, I will make, since this is an extra plan, I will make sure that the fire department gets one of these to take a look at.
And we can send one to the assessors.
Yeah, knowing that it's not final yet, but...
Well, the buildings have to be addressed.
Right, right. But they could see this is where they're planning on putting it, and do they have any history saved? Okay.
Move to adjourn.
That's, I was going to say, that's all I have.
Second.
Jim, you're there.
Look up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
You're working too hard at your real job.
Did you ever turn it on?
No.
Too slow. Too slow.
You're really quick to it.
I don't know. I think you just turned it off.
I was trying to beat you up tonight.
Yeah, you have to open the door. But you can get in there, right?
Hey, you do it now, it's less colorful than everything else.
I know, I thought it was pretty quiet.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, he's doing what he wants anyway, so it's not...
Right.
He's like, he's an altruist.
He'll be in that building.
Oh, where's the stupid button? That's usually open, I think, since it's...
Well, I can open it up, I forgot how to turn it off.
Push the button, that's on off, so it's just hold it down.
Oh, it's inside.
Sounds like a marriage.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
All right.